Mr. Skorla, all in favor, three zero. Can you please stand for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 8th and February 15th, as well as February 28th? Dr. Siddiqui, Mr. Skorla, all in favor, three zero. May I have a motion to open public hearing? Dr. Siddiqui? Am I right, Mary Lou, I'm fine? Mr. Skorla? All in favor, three zero. Are there any residents who would like to speak regarding the partial real property tax exemption to senior citizens and partial real property tax exemption to persons with disability this evening? Seeing none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing? Mr. Skorla, seconded by Dr. Siddiqui, all in favor, three zero. And now we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Monalito. And to begin my report this evening, Mr. Tomio has asked that I share the following statement with you. I apologize for not being in attendance tonight. In nine years on the board, I have missed as few meetings as possible. This opportunity was presented to me by my brother-in-law, who is an active-duty marine, and I found it to have many benefits that were worth pursuing. I am fortunate to be attending an educators workshop through the United States Marine Corps this week. As you will see through the slides, I will be partaking in a modified boot camp, workshops, and seminars. Through these sessions, I will ascertain information for our students and district in regards to the opportunities the military offers. They will be providing information for both career and educational pathways that the military offers. I look forward to being able to turnkey the takeaways when I return. Thank you, James. Throughout the district, we have wonderful things that have been going on. Junior conferences are presently taking place at John Glenn. Our guidance department at John Glenn has hosted for our incoming eighth-grade parents course selection. We had our volleyball-a-thon, and it was a tremendous success. Students had a great time, and they raised over $2,000 for the Sean Erda Foundation. Snowball dance was enjoyed by our students. And we look forward to recognizing our amazing basketball, wrestling, swimming, and fencing athletes at our March 21st meeting. The annual blue and white challenge was held at the middle school for our eighth-grade students, with the white team taking the belt from the blue team. Pie Day will be celebrated on March 14th at the middle school, where students can participate in raffles to try and pie their favorite teacher. The students are very excited. Students at James W. Boyd Intermediate School enjoyed their snowflake dance. And students in grades four and five participated in a very informative presentation by the Suffolk County Police Department focusing on proper use of technology, effective and accurate communication, and bullying. Read Across America was celebrated at Harley and Boyd. Harley students enjoyed a book character parade and a school-wide read aloud. Just for parents to note, parent-teacher conferences will be held on March 22nd at the elementary level. Thank you, Mrs. Monalito.
Amazing things going on around here. Thank you for your update. Moving on to residents' remarks. This portion of the agenda of remarks will go to things pertaining to the agenda this evening. So is there anybody here that would like to speak to anything on our agenda? Seeing none. We're going to move on to the presentation. Mrs. Dunkel, would you mind coming up to go over our budget workshop number four?
Good evening, board members, and good evening to the Elwood community. Tonight's workshop is budget workshop number four, and the goal of tonight's presentation is to review the current proposed revenue and expenditure budget. So as always, it is the goal of the board and administration to maintain the excellence and diversity of our programs while maintaining the safety, health, and welfare of our students and staff. As equally important is the responsibility to our residents and taxpayers. We must find the balance to support the community while maintaining our fiscal health. Tonight's topics include our state aid, our tax calculations, our total revenue, and estimated expenditures. On February 15th, the state released the second state aid run, but there were not many changes from the initial run in November. However, Governor Hochul is considering reinstating the save harmless clause that exists within the foundation aid formula. If this happens, Elwood could see an increase of approximately $90,000. And being optimistic, as I am, I have included this amount in the current proposed budget. Like, as I mentioned in the last meeting, as part of the ASBO board that I sit on, there is a lot of advocacy going on up at the New York State level, so we are very hopeful that she is going to at least reinstate the save harmless, so no school district on Long Island receives less aid than they received in the year before. Our UPK allocation has remained flat from the current year. It's roughly $415,000, which allows for 77 seats for students. At this time, the lottery registration for next year has closed, and the drawing will take place later this month. This slide represents our initial state aid comparison. As you can see by category, we have foundation aid, which is the largest portion of our New York State aid, and that's where the hold harmless comes into place. So as you can see, it's flat from year to year, because I am including that additional $90,000. Outside of that, you can see that there are not many increases overall to the state aid projections. I believe it's roughly $215,000. Our tax levy, we spoke in depth last board meeting regarding our tax levy projections. It is still currently sitting at 2.02, and based on the board's recommendation and discussions with administration, that is how we built the current budget, at a tax levy increase of 2.02%, which is roughly $1,050,000. This is our total revenue budget. Martha, is this coming through okay? I know you said to stand, but, okay, sorry. Every one of the audience can hear me well? Great. So our proposed revenue budget, again, we see the first item, which is our tax levy. Our tax levy represents roughly 70% of our total revenue for the school district, and that increase from the current year to next year is roughly $1,050,000. Our state aid projections are going to be anywhere from the previous slide, which I mentioned, $215,000, to the 366. And again, these numbers are subject to change based on the governor's final budget, which is due April 1st, but we've already been told that the state budget is not going to be in on time, so we're doing our due diligence to include the best numbers that we get. Our pilot increase is a small increase of $52,000. The largest increase you'll see in the revenue budget is coming directly from our reserves and our fund balance allocation. That is an increase of $1.5 million from the current year's operating budget. And then our miscellaneous increase is roughly $158,000, and that represents tuition payments that we may be receiving from other districts, interest we gain on our bank accounts, and our use of facilities fees that we charge for outside organizations. This slide is a simple pie chart, just representing the different percentages. It has the dollar amounts, not necessarily percentages for the pie chart, just to show the board and the community how the revenue is distributed. And again, as I mentioned earlier, our tax revenue is roughly 70% of our total revenue. This is the current estimated expenditure budget, and again, these figures are also subject to change. We are still receiving BOSI's proposals for next year, for some of our BOSI's programs. Mr. Honorato, our director of technology, is working on some technology proposals. We just recently received some staff retirement notifications that are on tonight's current budget, so there are a few things that are happening that will change these numbers slightly. I'm not expecting any major changes, but these are the numbers that represent our current proposed budget. And again, this is just a slide to show the expenditure distribution. And as you can see, the largest portion, the orange portion, is our instruction portion, as it should be, and that represents a little over 50% of the total budget. This slide just speaks to our budget challenges. I just wanted to go over again, we've spoken about this at length, both publicly and in executive session. Sustaining, this budget includes sustaining all of our current programs, including those that were previously funded by the grant. When the budget was finally, when the budget was finalized, the proposed budget that we're offering this evening, we had initial deficit of roughly $1.75 million. So we were able to trim some of that down, but in order to fill that gap of $1.5 million left, we are utilizing additional fund balance and reserves, which was represented on one of the previous slides. So while it is nice to have the availability of using those funds, it's not best practice in school budgeting, and I know we've spoken about this over the last few years, just over, you know, the district's overall fiscal health. But continued use of these funds will slowly deplete them. And similar to your savings, you know, anyone who owns a home or has their own savings account, the more you use it, the less you will have, unless you have the opportunity to replenish it. So school districts, well, Elwood has not had that opportunity to replenish their funds over the last couple of years. Last year, between last year's fund balance and this year's fund balance, we've used roughly $950,000 that we were not able to replenish. So it just, again, I just want the board and the community to understand, you know, again, it's important that we sustain our programs, we offer excellent programs here at Elwood, but we have to work harder to figure out what direction we're going in, because costs are going up, as in everyone's personal life, similarly in the school district as well. And just another, sorry, one note thing I wanted to mention regarding the fund balance and allocation of reserves. Again, ongoing use is not sustainable, and if we continue to do that, we risk our overall, I guess, rating for fiscal health, and we are in risk of receiving a fiscal stress designation from the New York State Customs Office, which is not something we would like. Some school districts have headed in that direction, and again, we're all, school districts, of course, in New York State are facing similar challenges as far as their finances are concerned. So we've had, we've been lucky enough to sustain our fiscal health over the last, I think, six or seven years, but again, if we continue to deplete our funds, we are in risk of getting that fiscal stress designation. Outside of the operating budget, an additional proposition that we are proposing the day of the budget vote is to once again spend money out of the Capitol Reserve. The community was very supportive last year, and we were able to approve Proposition 2 out of the Capitol Reserve to spend $500,000 on security enhancements. We're once again looking to, looking to the community to approve the Proposition 2 for an additional $500,000, and that's to continue some security enhancements, including upgrades to our, to James H. Boyd Intermediate School, replacing some of the entryways and doorways. We also need to purchase some district-wide maintenance vehicles and grounds equipment to upkeep our grounds. And along the lines of security, we're looking to add some district-wide door and window hardware replacement. And some of that is coming out of discussions we've had at the safety meetings. Excuse me. And again, just to remind the board and the community, the Capitol Reserve, that money has already been put into the reserve, so it does not affect the tax levy at all, and there are no additional taxes charged to the community on any money that's coming out of the Capitol Reserve. That concludes my workshop for this evening. The next workshop will be on April 11th, where we are hoping the board will be adopting the budget. And also, I just wanted to remind the community that we have two seats from the Board of Education that will be open in the upcoming school year. Anyone who's looking to pick up a petition can do so with the district clerk, and those petitions will be due back no later than April 22nd at 5:00 PM.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Dunkel. I appreciate the continuous advocacy that's going on in Albany, and hopefully, you know, they will come up with more money for us. That's always the hope. And I'm glad you feel optimistic that we should be able to keep that in the budget. Dr. Siddiqui, do you have any questions?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Dunkel, for that presentation. I just had a few, like, one or two questions. About the UPK funds, do you know how many people signed up? Or, because the lottery, you're saying, was it more than 77 people signed up, and we're going to pick 77 people, or is this the lottery to find out where they're going to be placed?
It's both. So we had 119 residents sign up for the UPK lottery.
Oh, wow.
We're still vetting through it. Some people did enter their name more than once, so we have to remove them, but it will still be over 100 residents, you know, looking to have their children placed in a UPK seating. And as part of the lottery registration, the residents had the choice of ranking the three schools that were board-approved, their first choice, second choice, third choice.
Okay. And will that help in terms of getting funds for the following year, perhaps, to increase our enrollment for UPK?
We hope so. The more we can show a need, that's one of the questions that we fill out when we file the actual grant application for the UPK funds. That is something that the state and federal government does look at.
Okay, great. And then I also had a question regarding the slide about the initial state aid comparison regarding the BOSI's aid. I know it just was the only one that was, I guess, less. So was there a reason why that was decreased? Or is that state aid for BOSI's that we get?
So that, BOSI's aid is based on our actual BOSI's expenses. So if we spend less, we get back less in the following year.
Okay, okay. So that's based on what we used, and we get state aid?
Correct. Same thing with transportation aid, correct.
Okay. Okay. And, yeah, if you could just, also, just go over one more time, I know we ask, I mean, I think I ask you this every single time. So the fiscal stress designation, that we have had a no designation, which is the best designation for the past six years, you said?
Correct, I believe it's six, yes.
So if we don't get that, how does that impact us, or what happens for the community?
So the impact will be on our overall financial picture, and if we receive any type of designation from the state, it just means that our, it's kind of a negative outlook for future on our fiscal health. It won't have any direct impact, impact, I would say, next year, but when we go to borrow, if we have to borrow funds for our TAN, our tax anticipation notice, or any future bonds, if that designation doesn't change, we're more likely to receive, the designation can directly affect our Moody's rating. So if our Moody's rating changes based on the fiscal stress designation, we're more likely to receive higher interest rates on our borrowing than we currently do.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Skorla?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dunkel, for your presentation. You've done a nice job. You've gotten our Moody ratings up. We're in a good place. I'm lucky that we have the reserves. We're taking the burden off our taxpayers this year, which is important to the board. We know people are struggling to pay their bills. I know we do have a financial cliff coming for next year, so we've talked about starting to audit everything in the district to see, you know, where we can save money, because next year's going to be a lot tougher. And, you know, like you said, we can't use the reserves every year, so hopefully next year, or even in the summer, we can start going through every part of our district and figure out where we can save money, so we can still provide top-notch quality education without having to burden the taxpayers or deplete our funds anymore. So thank you for everything, it's appreciated.
Thank you.
I just want to expand on that. I don't want there to be a perception that the district doesn't do that on a yearly basis. I know there was a time where we cut over $1 million out of our budget a bunch of years back, you know, for, we kept talking about not cutting with a chainsaw, but a scalpel.
Yes.
And we continued to cut and cut and cut. So it's not that we're not cutting, but, you know, we do need to always review and be responsible, to look at every part of our program and see where we can make, you know, further cuts. Thank you for your presentation, and I don't see any other questions, so we can move on.
If I may, just expand on that. I agree with, you know, everything the board said, and I appreciate the questions. You know, for me, it's important for the board and the community just to be educated about the community, to, excuse me, educate the community about the budget. I think it's important for everybody to understand what they're voting for. But there have been, you know, we did cut $1 million a few years ago, but we do consistently look at our programs, we look at our staffing, but there's been so many changes coming down. We have a lot of new mandates from the state that are out of our control, that unfortunately, you know, they're unmandated costs. So they come down with something new. Here, we have to educate children to a later age. You have to do it, but we're not giving you funds to do so. Our technology is growing, it changes every single day. And that's, I didn't highlight this per se, but I just wanted to talk to you as part of the budget, too. In our part of the budget, we have a transfer to capital for additional projects as well. One of them has to do with a connectivity solution. So next, at the next board meeting, Mr. Honorato, our director of technology, is going to be presenting on the future technology of Elwood's school districts. So the, in this particular budget, we're looking for a connectivity solution, which is essentially a fiber and cable project. What that's going to do is increase our bandwidth and provide faster connectivity. Quoting Mr. Honorato, he said, "This is basically going to turn the flow of our technology from a stream into a river." So it's going to allow us to move at a much faster pace, which is great for both students and staff. I just want to mention that. But again, agreeing with everything you said, there are just, there are a lot of new mandates that happen, and we have a lot of, our ENL, our ENL population is growing exponentially, and there are a lot of changes happening within the schools, and, you know, the state's looking for all these schools to make these changes, but not assisting us as far as funds, especially this year, when Governor Hochul's looking to take away funds from schools. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on to our consent agenda, we're going to take the agenda in its entirety minus the policy. So may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed? Dr. Siddiqui, Mr. Skorla, questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, three zero. Moving on to policies, we're on our second reading and adoption of policies. May I have a motion for the following? Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools and board policy subcommittee, the Board of Education hereby approves the second reading and adoption of the following policies as presented to the board at this meeting. Forty-three twenty-one point twelve, forty-three twenty-one point twelve dash R, forty-three twenty-one point twelve dash E, timeout and physical restraint, all students, forty-three twenty-seven, homebound instruction. May I have a motion? Mr. Skorla, seconded by Dr. Siddiqui, questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, three zero. The next portion of the agenda is for residents' remarks. Residents' remarks regarding matters pertaining to the district. I assume we have people here speaking this evening, correct? Yeah, okay. All right, I'm just going to read a little blurb. "The board encourages all residents to attend its meetings, and the section of the agenda affords them the opportunity to speak. Persons wishing to speak should identify themselves, state whether they are a resident of the Elwood School District, and any organization they represent at the meeting. Comments related to district business or any agenda item should be kept as brief as possible and may not exceed three minutes. Board policy 1230. Questions or comments concerning to matters which are not on the agenda will be taken under consideration and may be discontinued by the president. Public discussions of matters relating to students, staff, or others at which their reputations, privacy, or right to due process could be in some way violated is prohibited." You may go.
Hello. Jeffrey Royzman, current resident alumni of our great school district here. So I just want to say, when you said the fiber optic I heard at the last meeting, that's music to my ears, because I swear I've been bothering my ISP provider to get, you know, fiber. And it seems like, once you get, like, one big entity to do it, it's kind of like a domino effect that the rest of the neighborhood, you know, can get it. So hopefully that does happen. I'm looking forward to the presentation next meeting. But otherwise, why I'm here is, I was wondering, how is our school district best preparing, like, our students? Like, there's a concept called the post-labor economy, where they think, like, human employment could become obsolete due to, like, advancements in AI, like AGI. I don't know if you've heard this concept, but, you know, you know, what are we doing to best prepare, like, our students, like, with these skills and competencies to, like, you know, not get left behind in, like, the age of technology, you know? Because as we have the CHIPS Act, as, you know, our president's probably speaking right now about it, you know, these are things that we should be really focused on, that, you know, that could potentially be revenue generators, rather than rely on the residential tax levy. And, you know, we have, I know we've tried in the past with, like, the property near Warner Road over there. We've tried development over there, and then obviously residents have shot that down. So, yeah, we have to think of, like, new ideas that aren't commercial, you know, foot traffic, like, I'm thinking, like, data centers, things like that, that, you know, could bring tax revenue without relying so much on the residential tax levy. But that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. It's so nice to see a young individual come up here and advocate for those that are currently going through the system, but you bring up some really great points, and we have a lot of work to do, but I'm going to let either Mrs. Fallon speak, or Dr. Hood, or whoever wants to take that.
Sure. Thank you, Mrs. Monalito. One thing that I will share with you that we're excited about is that next year, there will be a new course at the high school that is life literacies, and actually speaks to many of the, really, items that you did. It's different components on successfully understanding, you know, how different components on successfully understanding, you know, how to move forward in your life, and not only financial, but technologically, in speaking. So it is something that the administrative team really is always reviewing to provide our students with the best opportunities, so that when they leave our schools, they are ready for success. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I just wanted to add that it does, it's amazing to see a student and alumni to come and be able to advocate on behalf of other students in the district. It's just wonderful, and that's more of a representation of the excellent education that you are getting at Elwood. And just to reiterate that, the World Economic Forum pretty much indicates that we are preparing kids for jobs that are not even created, you know. So I think the point, just to piggyback on what Ms. Fallon had mentioned, the courses that we are proposing to implement for next year will focus on those executive functioning skills, and to provide flexibility for student learning, so that they will be able to deal with whatever challenges they face as they graduate.
Any other residents?
Good evening, Amy Kern. Last night, Ms. Fallon advised me that the only way to ensure girls' equal rights in Elwood is through legal action. Rather than agreeing to provide the same options to every student or offering an alternate solution to ensure every student's equal rights, the district would prefer to engage in timely litigation at the taxpayers' expense. Last May, I requested that the district provide any law believed to specifically require schools to allow biological males access to female facilities. In October, District Council provided a letter. Cited therein are laws that provide equal rights to every student, the Human Rights Law, DASSA, and Title IX. Mr. Block concedes that we have always known that NICED guidance is not law. The letter does not cite any law that requires schools to give disproportionate rights to any student over others, because there are none. Mr. Block also did not explain how giving every student the same options is discriminatory. Refusing to give more to some is not discrimination. Hopefully, you've addressed your noncompliance with the education law by unlocking the gender-neutral bathrooms without requiring legal action. Mr. Block must have informed you that the HRL prohibits discrimination against those who have been assigned female at birth. That language, "those who have been assigned female at birth," came from a Boyd email about the upcoming, always-changing puberty education program. So the district does at times distinguish by sex, just not when equal rights get in the way of a narrative, I guess. The repeated spewing of a narrative does not turn them into law. Proposed amendments to a law are also not law. As you know, a community petition has been started partly in response to your expressed need to hear directly from students. It has provided a self-advocacy platform for many students who have understandably remained quiet for fear of being labeled as unaccepting. Your actions have revealed the disingenuousness of your feigned prioritization for the safety of every student. You prioritize the court of public opinion over the court of law, the latest equity narrative over girls' equal rights. Quite a message to send young girls during Women's History Month, let alone on Beherd Day. U.S. DOE's mandatory civil rights data collection for public schools revealed the following statistics for the 2021 school year. Twenty-seven hundred incidents of sexual assault, three hundred fifty incidents of rape or attempted rape, seventeen thousand allegations of harassment or bullying on the basis of sex.
Thirty seconds.
Sixty-three percent of the harassed students were girls. Seventy-eight percent of the disciplined students were boys. If you can't admit that allowing boys into girls' private spaces will increase these incidents, shame on you.
Thank you. Any other residents?
Good evening, everyone. Michael Kern, resident. I just have a brief follow-up comment with respect to the policy in the high school now with respect to the use of the bathrooms. It's come to my attention, the policy now, because there have been some incidents in the bathrooms, that only one person will be allowed in at a time. Even with respect to the girls' bathroom, if that, that there is a male student using the girls' bathroom, the girls are not allowed in their own bathroom. I have to tell you, that's just an awful policy. As a parent of daughters, to send the message that you have to wait for a male to do something, that is just not the definition of equal rights, and I fear this policy is promoting the very discrimination that I think we all want to prevent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other residents? Go ahead.
Good evening. Sarah Murphy, resident. I just would like to remind everybody that International Transgender Day of Visibility is an annual event occurring on March 31st, which is dedicated to celebrating transgender people and raising awareness of discrimination faced by transgender people worldwide. I support the girls in the bathrooms. I don't support men coming into the bathroom just so that they can attack a girl. But if a trans person is using the women's bathroom for bathroom purposes, I think that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other residents wishing to speak?
Good evening. Marie Nealon, resident, parent in the district. I have kids in all three schools. I find it very difficult to believe reports of children not being able to use the bathroom. It seems far-fetched to me, and I would encourage the board to comply with NICED regulations about anti-discrimination. I think that that is the right thing to do. I agree with Ms. Murphy that bathrooms should be open to students, and I, if I did see a situation where there was a trans girl using the girls' restroom, I don't see a problem with that. I think it's wise to have gender-neutral bathrooms available, and it would be surprising to me to hear that they were not. So thanks for all your good work.
Thank you. Any other residents?
Good evening. Desiree Fimaro, I'm a resident. I just have a question. Did we provide a gender-neutral bathroom in Elwood School District?
Gender-neutral bathrooms are provided in all schools throughout New York State.
Okay, thank you. So then why is it not being utilized?
The gender-neutral bathroom is available for, to anyone that would like to use it.
So, from what I understand, it's a fact that a student disregards that being provided for their usage and goes into the female bathroom instead?
We, this evening, we are not going to be speaking about individual students.
I'm not, I'm not providing anyone's name. I'm just saying that that's a fact, that a gender-neutral bathroom, so basically, it's a waste of our tax dollars that we, we put the money in to provide that for, for that child, and yet they choose to go into the girls' bathroom and make a female feel uncomfortable. So now we have to tell the female that if she doesn't want to be in the bathroom with a male, she has to request a special accommodation for her? Does that make any sense? Can, can we try to, can you, can you explain to me how that makes any sense? Go ahead, I'm sorry. Mrs. Momalito, did you want to comment?
No, I'm just letting you have your three minutes, and then I'll read a statement.
Okay, I'm done.
You're done?
I just said I'm done.
Okay. You can have a seat, then.
Is, is my time up? So then I can still stand here while you respond?
Well, I'm, I'm not going to respond to, to specifically your question, but I'm just going to let the public know that the district understands, acknowledges, and values all community member comments regarding restroom use by transgender students. The district is committed to creating a safe and supportive educational environment for all students. We have been advised by council that there are laws in the state of New York which protect the rights of transgender students as well as all, all other students. The district will continue to comply with the law and the protection of all students' rights. And, and that's our statement.
That doesn't answer my question.
Excuse me, Ms. Fallon, can you just clarify something? If you say a certain bathroom is only for certain individuals, that's discrimination, correct?
Correct.
So a gender-neutral bathroom, you can't make anyone use the gender-neutral bathroom?
A gender-neutral bathroom is available to anyone who would like to use it.
And if you say a certain type of student has to use that bathroom only, that's discrimination?
Correct.
And students have the option of using the gender-neutral bathroom, the nurse's office, or a bathroom on the first floor or the second floor? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
So once again, a female can be made uncomfortable because a bathroom that was provided for someone who chooses, who identifies as a different sex, can still go into the female bathroom when the school district provided a gender-neutral bathroom? That makes no sense. Common sense is lacking.
The gender-neutral bathroom was not made for any specific type of student. That was made for all students. Is that correct?
Correct.
Chris Fox, resident. I've tried to stay on the outside of this conversation, but I keep on hearing that there is law. What law? And I'm not talking about, I'm coming from this from an architectural point of view. Okay, if I go to the building department, and the building department tells me, "Well, Chris Fox, you have to have a 42-inch door to open into your residence." And I say, "Well, it only has to be 36 inches." And I said, "Well, prove it." "Well, it's the building code." "All right, well, give me the subsection. Give me the actual information. Give me the verbiage." So what's the verbiage? What's the actual law? What's the chapter and verse of the law?
Mr. Fox, we, if you would like to send an email, we can provide the same information that was provided to other residents that had a similar concern, directly from District Council.
Okay, now, Ms. Amy Kern, who I'm friends with, she has been, over the last 10 months, and she's been asking the specific question. She has not received an answer. So the, the problem I have with all of this is if you're going to, I won't use the word hide, but if you're going to keep using the word "law," tell us what the law is, and then everybody stands down. I mean, it's as simple as that. I mean, we went, when we, not to go all the way back, but we went through COVID, and we were told that it was law. Force masking is law. Well, a bunch of brave parents got together, opened a lawsuit against the state. It went to the New York State Supreme Court, and what happened? They said it was unconstitutional. So my question with all of this is, this, this issue can be put down immediately. Give us the actual law. I don't want to foil this. I don't want to create a disturbance. Just give us the law. Give us the subsection. Give us the information. Because the basic line of what we're saying here is that young girls feel uncomfortable. I'm a dad. I have a daughter, and I'll be quite honest with you. My daughter comes home from school and tells me, "Dad, I feel uncomfortable because there's a boy in my safe space, whether he's transgender or not." As a father, I'm not going to be happy about that at all. And if I get from the school that, "Well, it's law." Well, what's the law? And I get, "Well, you know, we'll send you an email on it." And we don't get information on that. I'm going to be pretty pissed off. So I would ask the board, in all due respect, give us the chapter and verse. Give us the verbiage, so that the rest of us can sit there and we can actually have, and then either debate that point, or just simply say that you're finding, you're following guidance, not the law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Erin Abisher, resident, three children in the district. I just have a question. Are students allowed to use bathrooms designated for staff?
No, they are not.
Why not? That's not discriminatory? They identify as staff.
Staff bathrooms are part of a contractual, that staff is entitled to have a bathroom to use during the workday.
Okay. Just as girls are entitled to have a safe place that is not invaded by males. Just because you want to sit up there and say that NICED is saying X, Y, and Z, I will remind you that is guidance. That is not law. And as Mr. Fox stated, we want the actual law to be provided to us, because this runaround and these circles that you're sending all of us in, trying to find out what this law is, is over and done with. We are done. So the narrative needs to change. It's like buck up or get out, okay? Give us the law, or there's going to be severe consequences.
Is that a threat, Mrs. Abisher?
No, it's a promise.
Okay. It's on recording. Right, it's on record. Thank you.
Everybody knows what's happening here. This is a hate movement, and this is...
Sir, can you just say your name? Can you just say your name?
I'm sorry. Leonard C. Suskin, resident, parent, representing myself, only myself. This is a hate movement. This is the same hate movement with the same people that were trying to ban LGBTQ books over the past couple of years. Now they're moving to bathrooms.
Excuse me. If, if we don't have order, I'll just shut the meeting down. So let's respect one another.
Is that a threat?
It's, I, it's not, it is a promise. I will shut it down.
Okay. In any event, I hope this doesn't count against my three minutes. It's a hate movement. And when you hear deliberately inflammatory and inaccurate language like "biological boys and biological girls," now, to the best of my knowledge, all the students in this district are biological entities. We don't have robots. We don't have incorporeal spirits. We don't have beings of pure energy. Do we have any of those in the district? Okay. Saying "biological boy" for a transgender girl is inflammatory, and it is an attempt to other that girl, to make her not feel like a real girl, to make a statement that you're not willing to say that she's a real girl. And...
Enough.
In...
Wait, can I get order here? I mean, this is, guys, we need to have respect. Like, enough. Everybody, enough. This gentleman has his right to say what he wants to say here, and let's have the respect, and sit in our seats, and act like adults.
And I'll say, and I don't want to drag this on too long, it's been said that transphobes have one joke. "I identify as," used to be "identify as an attack helicopter." "I identify as a cat that went litter boxes." We just heard the one transphobic joke. "They identify as staff." That is deliberate, inflammatory, anti-trans hate speech. It is ignorant about what the experience of being trans is, and it is indicative of what this discussion is really about. I'm old enough to remember the same discussions about having gay people in locker rooms and in same-sex restrooms. People in my parents' generation are old enough to remember when they had the same conversation about having black people and white people in the same place. And the answer was never, send the black people to the back of the room. The answer was never send the gay kid back to the closet. The answer was that we have to accept, and we have to move forward as a group. So I implore the board and the district to continue to stand for all of our students, straight, gay, cisgender, transgender. My friend, Ms. Murphy, pointed out that March 31st is the trans day of visibility.
Thirty seconds, sir.
November 20th is the trans day of remembrance. And that is a day on which I do not want to be talking about anybody from our district, and that is the direction that things go when we allow this hate speech to go unchecked. I thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. James Murphy, resident, parent. I want everyone to stop and think about what this discussion is really about. There are a handful of students in the Elwood School District who are trans. It's not 90% of the school. It's not 50% of the school. There's a handful of children that people have written petitions and... a handful of children that people have written petitions and assembled and yelled about because these children are believed not to be the arbiters of their own identities, are believed not to be able to live their lives as they deem acceptable, and are deemed unable to decide for themselves who they should be. And not only are these people saying that these handful of children shouldn't have the right to determine, determine for themselves who they should be, but that it should be the policy of the Elwood School District that these children should be told, "You aren't valid. Your interpretation of who you are is not valid and is not allowed here." And I really want everyone to think what it must be like for that 12-year-old child, 13-year-old child, who is already living a life that is far more difficult than the lives of most of their peers because of hearing things like this all around them. To be hearing that their school district is asked to, as a matter of policy, invalidate them and invalidate who they are because hypothetically, maybe somebody might be uncomfortable because they're in the bathroom together at the same time. Well, I can guarantee you that those trans kids are uncomfortable at all times when they're in a bathroom fearing, "Is someone going to come in here and yell at me and drag me out because they think I don't belong here?" Not, it's not hard to recognize that majorities always tend to look down on minorities and to push them aside and to try and push their rights to the forefront.
30 seconds, sir.
But what we really have here is people telling young kids, "I don't want you to have rights. I don't think that this society should allow you to have rights. And I don't think that your school district as a policy should give you rights." And I think that that's abominable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bernadette Prang, a resident. The board, the district is here to, to protect all students. That is your job. All students. The incidents that are taking place at the high school does not involve a transgender child. It's not a transgender child. It's a boy. And I hear it from my children. I hear it from when I'm picking my children up with their friends in the car. They're telling me the stories. What's happening now is that girls' rights are being taken away. Girls. Every child has options for the restroom. Every single one. You can use the boys' room. If you're, I don't want to say biological. I don't want to offend anybody. But if you were born as a boy, you can use that room. You could use the all-gender bathroom, especially if it was unlocked, and the nurse's office. The same thing for the girls. Well, those who are born as a gr, a girl. You have three choices. But by letting a boy, one who was born a boy, use a girl's bathroom, you're taking rights from a girl. That is the issue. It has nothing to do with transgender or anything like that. All students' rights should be protected. Every single child, whether it's a boy or a girl, whatever you were born as, whatever you think you are, it doesn't matter. They should all be protected. Thank you.
Thank you. We're coming up on 30 minutes for our residents' remarks. I don't know if anybody else is interested in speaking this evening. Is there anybody else going to speak? No? So then there's no need to extend. So, oh, okay. In that case, you agreed to extend. All right. So can I have a motion? Dr. Sadiq, Mr. Skroler, 3-0. Being resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends the second residents' remarks portion of the meeting by 30 minutes as per Board policy 1230.
Hi. My name's Grace Murphy. I'm a student at Jonglin High School. And I just wanted to put a little student perspective. This is just my opinion. I can't speak for anybody else. But I am in no way uncomfortable in letting a trans girl use the restroom at the same time as me. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for extending. My name is Michael Moran, a parent and a resident. I think the two, the better parts of tonight were when we had alumni speak and we had a student speak. And I wish this environment were more welcoming to that. It has reached a point where I could imagine many students do not want to come here because it is terrifying. I know, standing here myself, my heart is in my throat each time I have to speak because there is aggression, there is hostility, there are threats, even if you don't call them threats. I have seen people taking pictures of each other in this room on their cellphones. What is that if not intimidation? So how can we expect students to come up here and speak to their Board of Education, advocate for themselves, if we are intimidating them out of it? So I would like to see this as a better place for that, where kids can feel comfortable speaking. Regardless of what their position is, they should be able to speak. And that means, I think, upholding the rules that are supposed to be enacted here, which means no calling out from the stands, which means not identifying individuals as people tend to do repeatedly, even when they're told not to. There should be consequences for that. If they cannot follow the rules, they should leave. And then maybe we could have better speakers here, our alumni and our students, actually telling us what's happening in the school, instead of us thinking we know what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other residents? Yes, because this is the second, the second residents'. I'm sorry, you went in, I'm sorry, you went in the second residents' remarks. I apologize. I thought it was the first time. That's right. Anybody else? Seeing none. May I have a motion to adjourn? Dr. Uh, Mr. Skroler, Dr. Sadiq. All in favor? 3-0. Thank you, everybody. Safe home. Thank you.